I'd like to call this meeting to order. Invocation by Mr. Dylan Douglas. Pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Van Meter.
All your heads and pray with it. Lord, opportunity to gather. And all of our local leaders. Have your hands on this meeting. All of these things.
Man.
Pledge of allegiance by the United States of America. To the Republic, which is the nation God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum. I need a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion we approve.
Heck.
All in favor? Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
Heck.
All in favor? Before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on June 18th, 2024. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. We have a request to change the Planning Commission meeting from July 4th to July 11th.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Carries. Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This first item is a revised final plat for Hanover Place off Evans to Locks Road. This is kind of the last step in the revisions that were approved in 2023. The revised preliminary plat was approved in February of this year. This development is located on the north side of Evans to Locks Road and is zoned PRD, Planned Residential Development, and the revisions affect the five lots you see outlined there in red. So the approved final plat did show those five lots. The revision is to subdivide those five lots into 10 lots that allow for two unit attached groupings. So instead of having five single-family residences, we have five, well, 10 attached units in five groups of two on their own individual lots. The revised plat therefore includes a total of 35 lots, 10 of which permit those attached units with a zero-foot setback on one side only. The minimum lot size is 2,508 square feet, which is in accordance with the approved revision. And this shows the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Can we get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revised final plat for Hanover Place off Evans to Locks Road.
All in favor? Motion carries. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for the Warriors Walk Townhomes located off Baker Place Road. This shows the location of the property near the intersection of Baker Place Road and William Few Parkway. And the property is currently zoned planned unit development and has been since 2021. The preliminary plat was approved as part of a commercial site plan in October of 2022. And the final plat includes 44 townhouse lots with a minimum lot size of 2,433 square feet and an average lot size of 2,485 square feet. The required setbacks are 25 feet from the right-of-way and 15 feet from the rear property lines, and there is a minimum of 10 feet of separation between each group of units. Sidewalks are required on both sides of the roads, and a gathering area with benches and trees is required per the zoning conditions. This shows the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
I have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Warriors Walk Townhomes off Baker Place Road.
Second. All in favor? Carries. Montgomery again.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Phase One of Copper Ridge located off Washington Road. This is also a planned unit development. This shows the location of the property on the south side of Washington Road adjacent to the Greenbrier Townhouse Development. And this first section here is 58 townhouse lots with a minimum lot size of 2,366 square feet and an average lot size of 2,912 square feet. The required setbacks are a minimum of 40 feet from the center lines of the roads and 12 feet from the rear property lines with, again, the 10-foot minimum separation between groups of buildings. There is a 30-foot buffer required along the east property line, which you can see on the plat. Sidewalks are required on both sides of the roads, and 6.85 acres of open space is provided in this section. Per zoning conditions, they did have to give us architectural renderings of the buildings before the final plat could be approved. As you can see, we have received those. And this shows the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Have a motion, please.
Chairman, I have make a recommendation for final plat for Copper Ridge.
All in favor? Carries. Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir. This is a plan revision for a church, first of several that we have on the agenda today. This location is at 4594 Columbia Road, 100 Hillcrest Drive, and 2109 Oak Ridge Road. For a total of 12.6 acres, there is zoned S1 special, and the existing uses are church and education-associated uses. This is the location on the south side of Columbia Road. This is the S1 zoning, and you can see there are, the S1 to the left is Wimberley, and you've got quite a bit of C2 commercial around there as well. Close-up of the aerial. These are the side photographs. The top two are what you see driving along Columbia Road frontage. The trees on the buffer on the left is the part of the site where this site plan, where the new plan is going to have the temporary modular buildings adjacent to the townhome development. And this is a site photograph looking towards the athletic fields on the south side of the property. Here's the plat of the property. And in 2007, there was an approved plan for an extension for the athletic fields and recreation and overflow parking on the site. And in 2015, there was a master plan approved for this building, which is still going to be part of the future plan. This sanctuary expansion is no longer needed, and the parking spaces will stay as they are. And this expansion was already built as part of the education building. The proposed plan shows this location of temporary classrooms, and as a church, they are fundraising for the expansion, and they're proposing to keep the classrooms for a couple of years until they build a permanent school. There is some reconfiguration of the parking for that. And this is a rendering of the modular buildings that are proposed there. The existing site has about 315 parking spaces, and when the full build-out is done, there will be 349 spaces. And with the times of use of the building, with the church services on Sundays and the school being open on the weekdays, there is some shared parking that will work as well. This is the future development map. It's in the neighborhood's character area, which allows for residential and school and church uses as well. And typically with residential near schools, there are usually complaints about traffic. So this, the rezoning to approve the revision with a condition to say that an adequate route for pickup and drop-off of students should be on school property, and the school may not use or impede the flow of traffic in Columbia County's right-of-way. That concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you. The applicant Alexandra Reynolds, our owner of the Baptist Trinity Baptist Church, would like to speak on behalf of this major revision.
Alexandra Reynolds, 1296 Broad Street, Augusta, Georgia. Mystery pretty much laid everything out. I'm just here if you have any questions.
Do you all have a plan for the prevent traffic backup with school?
Yes, with the internal drive that will help keep the traffic off the road more onto the property. And the school also has a plan for pickup and drop-off procedures that will help with that.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience opposed to this major revision, would you like to come forward and speak? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file RZ24-06-01. Major S1 revision to the permit temporary classrooms for Trinity Baptist on 4594 Columbia Road, 100 Hillcrest Drive, and 2109 Oak Ridge Road.
All in favor? Carries. Mystery.
Yes, sir. This is, the location is 3592 Evans to Locks Road on 1.09 acres. The current zoning is S1 for a church, and the revision is to allow a new church building and temporary gravel parking. Here's the location on the south side of Evans to Lock, which is between, the driveway is between two homes. This is the zoning, which is surrounded by R2. The church was zoned S1 in 2000, and the church building has been there since 1900. An aerial of the site shows the Westlake Maintenance Sheds that are on the left-hand side of the screen there. They also share the parking and access road to this church. This is a photograph of the existing access road off Evans to Locks Road. You can see the two homes either side of that. And this is a close-up of the aerial, which shows the building right here was the original church that was demolished in 2022. And the photograph on the left is what the old church looked like. There are about 60 graves on this site, so one of the concerns is that there's very limited buildable area on this site. And here's some site photographs. It shows where the old church building was located. And these are site photographs facing towards the two homes that surround that property as well. This is the existing building where the activities take place right now. And a plat of the property. In 2000, there was an approval to S1 to bring the zoning into compliance. The proposal was to rebuild the existing church at the time, and that was approved. And the current development plan shows where the new building is going to go because the addition that was built was built on the left side of the site. You can see there, there's driveway access from Evans to Locks Road. This is a site where there's some limited parking and vehicle circulation. This is the driveway that also extends over to the Westlake property, and the driveway access and the parking is shared between the church property and the Westlake property. During the week, most of the workers at the Westlake Maintenance park on the church property, and then on Sundays, the church parking and overflow parking is on the other side as well. So a lot of this is shared and has been for many years, and that's how it's worked out. With the current plan and the expansion, one of the considerations was the vehicle circulation by the fire truck access. And so the church is requesting to postpone to be able to work out with the neighbors way to handle the parking and the access. And they're working with the homeowners and the Westlake property owner as well. Here is the building plan of the new church building. And this is, again, how the building looked and the existing building and the rendering of the church. It will be a traditional style to fit in with the residential neighborhood. Close up the rendering. And this is in the future development map, Neighborhoods Character Area. Again, it allows residential church and educational uses and fits in with land use. So the applicant requests to postpone this, to work out the details for the technical part of the site.
The applicant Michelle Coward here. Would you would like to speak out? Would you like to speak?
Jackson.
Thank you.
I'm the pastor of Clark Grove Baptist Church on 3592 Evans to Locks Road. I would like to please also request that Abandis Gun showing us here. Thank you so much. We're here. It's been very much laid out by Sister Anna, but we are here to answer any questions, also maybe to talk or address any concerns you may have. Excited, looking forward to what's happening for us and for the community. But we're here to, to support, we support what's been said, it's been laid out, but Abandis Gun and myself and my church members are leaders. Anything that we can ask, if you can ask us, we can answer. We're here to do so.
Had a good relationship with Westlake for several years?
Yes, sir.
Working together with the parking.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure the date, September 5th you're postponing?
Yes, sir.
All right. I cannot say this. I don't think I've ever seen a hand-drawn rendering. Right?
Pretty good.
Very, very well done.
Yes.
This is the servant that got you to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone in the office, audience, who would like to speak in opposition to this revision? Okay. Motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ24-06-02. Major S1 revision for a new church building at 3592 Evans to Lock Road, September 5th, 2024 Planning Commission.
All in favor? Carries. Butler?
Insurance request for a major plan revision off Washington Road, 6389 Washington Road, 6379 Washington Road, about seven and a half acres total. Currently zoned S1 special for a place of worship. The request for a major plan revision for building a parking lot expansion. Location of the property, again, basically across the street from Ubain Drive, it's intersection with Washington Road. Does include all three of these properties. Other conditions to combine these with this request. Currently zoned S1s in the north, you have all R4. Then across Washington Road, you have RA, residential agricultural, that have the current S1. There's aerial view of the site, and we'll talk about this pond here in a minute as well. And the plat of the properties. The existing site. So back in 2020, there was a request made to basically have this building added to the site itself. That did not happen, also these. That did not happen, so they're requesting revision now to this plan. And what you have is on the existing church, about a 4,000-square-foot addition would be at the back of it, and about an additional 28 to 30 parking spaces over here. Well, the building that was proposed here, again, not, no longer proposed. You also have the gazebos out next to the pond itself. This is the existing pond. Again, it's a great-looking pond, so I had to include a picture of it. And in terms of future land uses, this is within Lake Neighborhoods area. A church isn't allowed to use in a lot of places in Columbia County. It does meet the intent of the future development map. There was some issue with, not issue, but some concern with the current location of the existing building. So we do have a condition that addresses it. It's basically within that front setback that was defined by the zoning. No issues with this, putting in there saying this can remain and basically covering our bases on that. And we do have a carryover condition from before, requiring the combination plat to be recorded basically before they get either building permits or site plan approval. Again, that's a carryover from before. That concludes staff recommendation. Question?
Thank you. Owner and applicant, Vicky Jones, would you like to come forward and? Can you state your name and address, please?
As you know, I am not Vicky Jones. I'm Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering, 842 Sparkleberry Road. I'm the project engineer, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Staff did a great job of laying out the plan. What I will say is that the immediate project that the church intends to construct is the additional parking area. That will be done first. The building addition will be done at some point in the future. Not a fine date for that, but that would be done as a second project. The gazebos and the pavilion, those will come at some point. They may come before or after the building addition, but the initial project will be the parking lot expansion, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience would like to speak in opposition of this major S1 revision? Motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file RZ24-06-03. Major S1 revision for an expansion of the building and parking lot for the existing church at 6389 and 6379 Washington Road.
All in favor? Carries. Mystery?
Yes, sir. This is the location at 837 Furious Ferry Road on 7.94 acres, and the current zoning is S1 for a place of worship for the BAPs organization. Request is a major S1 revision to modify the site layout and allow temporary gravel parking. Here's the location on the north side of Furious Ferry Road across from Jones Creek. And here's the zoning map. So they, the original zoning was 2000, sorry, the original zoning was 1993, and in 2022, they did acquire zoning from the landowner next door to add six acres to their S1 zoning and rezone that to S1 as well and make a combined plat. And the, this revision is for the site layout, which you'll see in just a minute. Here is the aerial of the property. You can see the existing building and the parking to the south of the building. This is a site photograph, and the slope of the existing driveway is very, very steep, and you can't really see any of the building or the parking of this development. And once you get up to the top of the driveway, this is the parking and the building that church. Here's the plat of the property. And this was the 2022 approved plan that showed the addition, which is here. The parking was laid out in a long section on this side, and then the recreation was at the back. With the proposed plan, the parking has been changed to this area here. That's where the permanent parking will be, and the current revision requesting to use gravel parking for this area, and that is going to be located where the future building will be. And the driveway is required to line up with Hammond's Ferry here. That was part of the agreement for the rezoning in 2022. And the church has been working with GDOT and the county engineering department. Have an engineering plan for the driveway improvements. And part of the requirements, please, close-up of the changes. This is where the gravel parking will be. The church is requesting a three-to-five-year timeframe to allow for fundraising and executing their plan for the long term. Tension Pond is, yeah, Tension Pond is at the front right there, and Phase One will also include a basketball court and a playground as well. The future development map, this is in the Neighborhoods Character Area, which does allow churches and schools, and this fits the use of the area. And the applicant has, there was a staff condition on the staff report to recommend one year for those gravel parking, and the church feels that that's not long enough to, what they want to do with their future plans, so they are recommending to postpone to July 11 to give them time to work out what they need to do.
Thank you. The owner and applicant from BAPs, would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of your major revision?
Hello, sir. Niren Patel at 40175 Honkord in Augusta, Georgia.
This is B.C. Patel, 2287 Colony Square, Evans, Georgia.
I think the staff did a great job in laying out all the facts and all the drawings over here. Yes, I think we didn't get a chance to talk with all the stakeholders, and since this is a church, it's heavily dependent on the funding from fellow congregation members. So we would like to take this back to our people and ask them what can be done because obviously one year for a condition might not be enough for us to develop the future plan.
I think because we are a small community, most of our issues are the funding issues, as you know. We, that's why when we recommended for an S1 revision, we had a three-phase approach. Phase one, we had temporary parking for three to five years, and then in the back, the permanent parking, also in three to five years, so that it will kind of align together. And then building comes later. The reason one year is not good enough, if we do a permanent parking, that's where the building is going to go in the future. There's lots of unnecessary expense for us. We would like to have a three years, three to five years for the temporary parking, if that's possible. That's our request.
Going to go ask for more donations?
Yeah, yeah, we are. We are going for more donations. We are actually working on it, but it's going to take three to five years so that we can do this, and then after five years, three to five years, we'll have a permanent parking, and then the building will come also near future. So that's why we tried to do a phase approach. That's why we're asking for temporary parking. If you get an approval for three to five, it'd be great.
Understand your dilemma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak in opposition of this major S1 revision? Okay. Motion, please?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ24-06-04. Major S1 revision modifying the site layout and allowing temporary gravel parking at 837 Furious Ferry Road to the July 11th Planning Commission.
Second, that motion. All in favor? Carries. Douglas.
Yes, sir. This is another application by a place of worship for a major S1 revision at 312 McCormick Road. This shows the location near the intersection of Old Evans Road and McCormick Road. This shows the zoning. Again, it's already zoned S1 for the church. They're just looking to make a revision as they look to project their future plans. This is an aerial of the site. As you'll see here, kind of what looks like the principal building of the development currently was previously a residence, a home, currently that houses the church office staff. And actually, the smaller building on the southern tip of the property is the building that they meet in currently. And so their revision is for additional parking that kind of coincides with their church body's growth as well as projected growth, as well as a larger building to house that growing church congregation as well. This is the site. Again, you can see the building that looks like it's residential in character. That's the That's the office building. And the building off to the right, that's the meeting building currently. And then this is the view. If you saw, there's road frontage on the kind of southern edge of the property on Answood Road. This is the view from over there. You can see there's a pedestrian connection to Answood Road, but no vehicular connection at all. There's no driveway through to Answood Road. That is not changing with this revision. There will still only be a pedestrian connection to Answood Road. And you can see that here depicted on the concept plan that's been submitted. This concept plan, as well as the S1 revision, helps us kind of establish setbacks and buffers along all the property lines. As well, you can see that there's a roughly 15,000 square foot church building on the upper level as well as a sizable basement. Here it's shown as just north of 6,000 square feet. The basement is purposed for storage, while the upper level contains most of the facilities affiliated with the operation of a church, a sanctuary, fellowship hall, kitchen, some classrooms. Again, you can see the plan is in large part to pave much more parking than is present on the site currently. There's only about 20 spots currently. They're looking to have a grand total of approximately 100 by the end of this. And again, they're establishing, most notably, 20-foot landscape buffers along the northern property line and the eastern property line here. Along with the new building that they're proposing, they're also going to tie into the public sewer system as opposed to remain on a septic system, which they currently are on. Obviously, the larger building is going to kind of breed the necessity for that connection as well. One issue that they're facing with their submitted concept plan is you see the driveway to the north of the building. It looks like a cul-de-sac. It effectively is. The reason that was included in their concept plan is for fire marshal concerns. The fire marshal needs emergency access to the bulk of the building. And so in review of this concept plan, the fire marshal, there is no dimensions or materials shown for that driveway currently. And so the fire marshal has concerns with that. And so a condition you'll see that we're proposing on this application is for a site plan tweaks to take place, you know, at the site plan review process, which will take place, you know, if they can get approval for it. You know, this application is for largely the zoning, the use, and the concept plan, which is what you're looking at right now. One thing you'll notice is with the new building depicted as the residential building that's there on the site currently, whether by demolition or just moving it off the property for reuse elsewhere, that residential building will migrate off the property once occupancy is approved for the new building. So it'll just be the new building and then the current gathering building, which will remain on site. And again, there's, this site plan doesn't show any additional driveway accesses. The primary and only access still will continue to be only off of McCormick Road. We also have, have had some public concerns expressed regarding the impact that this development will have on the Answood Road houses, which are probably the ones closest in proximity to where the proposed new building will be. I mentioned previously that there's 20-foot landscape buffers proposed on both the northern and eastern lot lines. That is the width of buffer that you would see for other commercial developments in the county. Another part of what we would normally see in buffers throughout the rest of the county would be opaque fencing. And so we have a condition proposing that opaque fencing be installed as a part of that buffer that's also going to be along those lot lines again, that are right up against those residential developments, those residences that are already there. Beyond that, with the site plan tweaks that we anticipate, we don't envision that this building, as you can see, the building is almost right up against those landscape buffers. So given even just this concept approval, they won't be able to move that building closer to the residences than they already will be. Those buffers will remain in place as, you know, as conditioned and as shown here on the site plan, regardless of any site plan tweaks that might take place during the site plan approval process. Finally, as you've already heard, in most character areas on the future development map, churches are allowed as a civic use. This in-town neighborhoods character area is no exception. Churches are allowed in this area. I know the predominant surrounding area is zoned and residential in character. However, churches are allowed per the comp plan just kind of outline. And so again, I mentioned both the conditions already for the opaque fencing and then also for site plan tweaks to satisfy a fire code at the next stages. But given those conditions, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. The owner and applicant, Robert Corbin, would like to come forward?
Robert Corbin, 413 Padrick Street, Martinez, Georgia. Jeff Drake, the civil engineer.
500 Norwich Road, Augusta, Georgia.
You have anything?
Whatever you want to ask.
Nope, I don't have a question, but if you wanted to.
Dylan did a great job of laying out everything. And we'll be able to meet. Read to the conditions.
Have you started a plan to address the fire issue?
Yes.
Fire access issue?
Add.
When you bring the concept plan.
And the fencing, you don't have a problem with that?
Not at all, yeah.
Awesome.
Or does ours please?
Thank you. Anyone in the audience in opposition to this major S1 revision, would you like to come forward? State your name and address, please.
Diana Holbine, I'm at 283 Answood Drive. I'm at the next to bottom house that's going to be affected by this major building. Some of the concerns I have, I have no problem with the church. I have no problem with, with the, I just want to make sure I state that. There's no problems there. But my concerns have to be the building itself, because I am exactly 20 feet from my bedroom window to the edge of my, to the edge of the church right there. So there's only 20 feet plus whatever the buffer is. And I understand what the engineer just said, that 20 is an average number. The problem is, is that the slope of this, the way it comes down, I'm down here at the bottom and there's one more house down at the very bottom of the hill. He cannot be here because he's very, so he couldn't go up. So I kind of speak for him, he's at 285. But with this roundabout here, that's a lot of concrete, which means that there's a lot of runoff. And if I understand, pretty much this area is going to be clear cut. These are 40-foot, 50-foot trees that are all within there, plus smaller, you know, how it grows. But there's a lot of trees right there. But this big building, I don't know what kind of roof that they anticipate having, but I know if you have a gable roof, that's a lot of water that comes off. And I'm right at the edge right there. So I want to know how that's going to be addressed as far as, is it going to have gutters that will make it flow to the detention center or the stormwater? I noticed that it's a six-foot fence that they're requesting. And I would like to request a higher one simply because I know that when you have lighting, and I know that there'll probably be, not those emergency lightings, but relight, whatever, that's our own buildings, you know, to, to make sure it's not all dark and scary. Well, the building is going to be so tall, it's going to be shining right there over the fence into my yard. So light pollution, I guess you could call it. Also, I have, it is such a large building, it's over 21,000 square foot total. And the air conditioning HVAC system that's going to go on there, there are going to be HVAC system, is it going to run along the backside, which is all the noises going into the four yards? I'm affected twice really, because I'm at 283 and my mother's at 267. So there's one yard, we're actually connected on the back yards. I'm the talker. So, but these are some of the concerns that I have that I would like to be addressed. I really would like a, a higher fence because of light, to know where the HVAC system is going. There's some really beautiful trees that I would love to see specifically, there's a.
There's trees on their property though, right?
Yeah, there, there's one that should not be affected that I would really like to save. It's a pecan tree that's right there on all three properties, Lance's, mine, and the church's. It's just right there. I don't think it should be affected, but I'll, I'll talk to the preacher for that one. But those are the light pollution. Water runoff from the building, much less when they clear cut everything. I know that they're going to put up the silk fences. It's just the way it runs, because it is definitely hard Georgia clay. That is all that's back there. When I first moved in before the growth started happening on that hill that's right there along the back of it, the water would be up to my ankles on the rain. So it's a lot of water that comes down that hill all the way down to the bottom.
Thank you.
It's, it is, it is a lot. And I know that modern engineering, we can, about it. Like I said, I'm not trying to prevent it. Trying to find a happy medium so that my land is not affected by all these different.
Right? Would y'all want to address the runoff?
Thank you for your concerns. Columbia County is not going to allow us to develop something here that's going to put more stormwater than is already flowing onto your land. As we go through the engineering process and the stormwater review process, they will not allow any more water than is already coming onto your land. Come on to, so while this is a concept plan, we'll do the engineering design, excuse me, in order to mitigate that and make sure that the existing condition flow is equal to or less than what afterward, after we design and develop it. We'll make sure that the building roof is, the gutters are directed towards the detention pond as necessary if we may be able to, you know, have some of the water discharge, but not go into the pond. But the collective discharge will not be any greater than what is allowed there now. I'm not an architect, so I can't speak towards where the HVAC is going to be. I haven't seen the building plan or the mechanical plan to understand where that would be or how that would affect noise. I can speak to the, you know, the 20-foot buffer that we have there and we will save every tree inside that buffer as we can that won't be affected by the grading. We can do some things on site to show you what trees will come down and.
On the, the buffer part, I want to address that as well. When we did the original back in 2012, 2013, we were supposed to have like deciduous trees or whatever along the edge in the neighbors on the, I don't know, east-west, whatever. So along the easement side, they, there you, whoever helped me, thank you, on that side. They wanted it to be on their, their side of the easement, because the easement was there and we were going to have to put everything on our side of the easement. That didn't help them at all. So we worked with the neighbors at that point. And the preference for them at that point was to have Leyland cypresses, because they would be more of a curtain rather than deciduous with the bushes and that kind of stuff. So we gladly planted those as well. My thought process is as well for them down there that we plant, again, we'd be willing to plant a whole layer, layer of trees. And I understand as well, the beginning part of that, they're not going to be as exciting looking as you plant them eight foot on center and that kind of stuff. But if you look over at John and Christie's house, the red brick house, all those Leyland cypresses and everything else, we planted those for them. And so that's our, our goal is to, again, we understand, I, I live in a neighborhood, I get that. So we want to be able to do that. And again, I'm not the architect. I, my, through the family, father-in-law kind of thing will be that. But I know that we can build like fencing around the air conditioning units and that kind of stuff that would buffer sound. So what if we can do to mitigate those things as well, we're willing to do. In the grand scheme, those are small things in order to be good neighbors.
Well, thank you.
When they bring the concept plan to us, it's got to have a dialectic. Has to have the lighting plan with it, right?
Doesn't have to. Certainly, if they're going to put lighting on the, on the, you know, on the building itself for security lighting and things like that, we can certainly take a look at that and, you know, offer suggestions on how best to mitigate that. Either if it's not going to be wall packs or full lighting, downward face that and screen that accordingly.
And most of that is going to be in the parking lot, which is actually on the front side of the building, which will be opposite of Answood.
Sounds great, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file RZ24-06-05. Major S1 revision for a new church building and parking at 312 McCormick Road.
Second. Favor? Hearings?
Yes, sir, this is the first of, of variance requests. It's a location at 224 Flores Lane on .33 acres. The zoning is R3, single-family residential. And the request is a variance to code 90-53 for the reduced setback. Here is the location and the property is south of Flores Drive, Flores Lane, sorry. The zoning, which is the R3, single-family residential. And a aerial of the property. Photograph of the house from the street view. And a plat of the property. And you can see here, there's actually the existing house just encroaches into that 10-foot setback. And the house was built in 1967 and the zoning code was adopted in 1979. And this is the concept plan of the addition. It will be a one-story addition at the back of the house with a bedroom and a bathroom. And here's the setback line. The request is for a five-foot setback, because the addition will be in line with the, the side wall of the house. There are no utility easements impacted by this request. So the addition will go here. And you can see that the neighbor's house has a driveway across here, so that's mostly for parking. But there's really no adverse impact for the neighbors as well. List in sight from the other view. Staff is recommending approval of the request of five-foot side setback.
Thank you. Owners, applicants, would you like to come forward?
For Flores Lane? If y'all have any questions? Great, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this variance? Have a motion, please?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file VA24-06-01, variance to section 90-53, reduce the side setback to five feet at 224 Flores.
Second. All in favor? Hearings?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to section 74-80, design of streets for a property located off Cobham Road. This shows the location of the property on the north side of Cobham Road near Mistletoe Road and is currently zoned RA, residential agricultural. We are not considering any changes to that zoning at this time. This shows the aerial of the property. It is generally triangular and does have a creek that bisects it down the middle. The adjacent properties, if you'll notice, are largely landlocked. Look at the kind of these guys, they're all accessed via private easements. So there's no public road connections to, to these properties. They're, they're all shared driveways. So the variance request is in regards to the proposed cul-de-sacs. This is related to a concept plan supplemental, which we'll be reviewing after the variance. The proposal is to develop this property into 20 large lots that would be served by two private gravel roads. Both of those are going to exceed the 700-foot maximum cul-de-sac length in the subdivision code. And that is the subject of the variance request, is to allow those longer cul-de-sacs. Per county code, topographic or other conditions can provide a basis for approval of a variance to this code section. We talked about just a moment ago, there's really not a viable connection to adjacent properties since they are easement accessed. There's no, no public road to access to the, the sides of this property. You could connect the two cul-de-sacs to each other and it would essentially create a loop, but it would require crossing that stream, which does come with some potential environmental impacts, environmental permitting, things of that nature. This is a very rural area and a very rural development pattern. All of these lots are over five acres. So this is a very different scenario from something in town where you might expect a more of a gridded. So, this is a very different scenario from something in town where you might expect a more of a gridded pattern and you would want those shorter cul-de-sacs and shorter block lengths. And this kind of rural development pattern, the longer cul-de-sac isn't necessarily out of character with this area. So, staff is recommending approval of the variance request.
Thank you. The owner and applicant likes to come forward?
Good afternoon. Mark Ivey, seven-thirty, Stonecrest Lane, Aplink. Danielle always does a good job out there for you guys, so I'll just be glad to answer any questions.
Like a nice development.
Thank you.
And the audience would like to speak in opposition of this variance? Get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the variance for VA...
All in favor? Ares. Dugliss?
Yes, sir. This is the related concept plan review for Rabbit Run Farms located off Cobham Road. We just saw this property. It is on the north side of Cobham Road and zoned RA and it is intended to be developed under that existing zoning. So, again, the concept plan is to develop this property into twenty of large, single-family lots. All of the lots do exceed five acres, which does allow the private roads to be gravel. They will have to be maintained by the HOA. They will not be county roads. There is public water out here, but the lots will be on septic systems. The fire marshal did have a couple notes that'll need to be addressed prior to the preliminary plat submitted, but they don't impact the approval of the concept plan. So, staff is recommending approval.
Have a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval for the concept plan on...
Favor? Ares. Douglas?
Yes, sir. This is an application for variance to section ninety dash fifty-three for four-seven-eight-one Silver Lake Drive. This is the location of the parcel, just north of Washington Road along Silver Lake Drive. This shows the zoning. It's surrounded on all sides by R-one. Again, development closer up to Washington Road. This is a plat for the property. And this is an aerial, a closer look at the property. Something of note here is, as you can see, this parcel that's in question is surrounded by a larger parcel on all sides other than the road frontage to Silver Lake Drive. The reason for that is that parcel with the pond surrounding this one and the parcel in question are both, share the same owner. The surrounding parcel is in conservation status, tax status that supplies some tax relief on property taxes for that larger parcel, which also means that it cannot be built on. That combined with kind of the odd shape of this parcel causing increased setbacks are kind of the reason for this application. If neither of those things were the case, the odd shape of this parcel or the conservation status of the surrounding parcel, the applicant really wouldn't need a variance. He'd be able to build the storage structure that he's proposing at this location by right. And, but we'll see a little bit more about why he needs this application in just a moment. This is the existing site. And this is the concept plan. We'll zoom in here on the more detailed section. But you can see all the way in the northwesternmost corner of the plan, you can see a shop or storage building illustrated that is for storage of the property owner's RV. Again, a purpose and accessory building that would be allowed by right if it weren't for, again, the depicted setbacks or the conservation status of the surrounding larger parcel. Here we can see there's twenty-five-foot setbacks along all these parcels, along all these lot lines, sorry, for the oddly shaped flagpole-shaped parcel. They're encroaching into those setbacks with this building plan. However, they don't anticipate being any fewer than ten feet from the closest lot line. But their request was for zero-foot setbacks. Again, because he owns the much larger surrounding parcel as well as this one, staff saw no issue with the complete reduction. The applicant's been made aware if he goes more than five feet, like within five feet of his closest lot line, he'll have to fire grade the structure due to proximity to lot lines. That's just required by fire code, county fire code. But again, they don't envision that. The only other issue that we're seeing with this is if you see there's close proximity to a neighboring parcel of differing ownership. If the lot lines between the applicant's two parcels were abandoned, there would be a ten-foot setback on either side of this lot line that we're showing the red rectangle next to to kind of illustrate. There is a way with a zero-foot setback that they could possibly construct this storage structure within that ten-foot prospective setback if he abandoned all his lot lines. This condition is mostly housekeeping. We don't think that's a realistic way to build this. I certainly don't think this is the way the applicant plans to build this structure. But we're including the condition again just to cover ourselves and make sure that in the future, the abandonment of those lot lines doesn't cause any kind of wacky situation where they might be in compliance currently, given the variance, but not once they abandon the lot lines, it might be within that ten-foot setback. So, we're just ensuring that with the condition and then recommending approval.
Thank you. Owner and applicant, would you like to come forward? Kaufman?
Matt Kaufman, forty-seven-eight-one Silver Lake Drive. Thank you, Dylan, for explaining that. I don't foresee any problems with that red rectangle though. Our purpose was just to, currently with the twenty-five-foot setback of a lot line, it's impossible really to get that building in there without getting on top of the house. So, I'm just requesting permission to build my own land shop. If I have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would the audience would like to speak, speak out in opposition to this variance? Come forward and state your name and address.
I'm DePuce, representing the Silver Lake neighborhood and president of HOA. One of the major concerns that all our members had is building a shop and then an RV storage unfortunately might open the door into making, having a commercial RV storage, which definitely would hurt the neighborhood and of course, the whole subdivision.
They're thinking he might have several RVs stored there.
Exactly.
It would have to get approval.
Yeah, he'd have to get approval from us to do that. It would have to be rezoned.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Hey, can I get a motion, please?
Your chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file VA twenty-four dash zero six dash zero three, variance to section ninety dash fifty-three to reduce the rear setbacks, forty-seven-eight-one Silver Lake Drive to zero feet.
I second. All in favor? Ares. Your Douglas?
Yes, sir. This application for variance is for forty-ninety-nine Jimmy Dias Parkway. It's an application for twenty-four-hour operation of a convenience store with fuel pumps. This is the location of the parcel. You can see it's got road frontage on three sides. It's here at the interchange of I-twenty with Jimmy Dias and Bel Air, Jimmy Dias Parkway and Bel Air Road. You can see kind of even just in this photo, there's about six or seven hotels just in view here and additional ones south of the image that aren't captured surrounding this parcel as well as the property directly to the south of this one. Across Park West Drive is a truck stop, which is already in twenty-four-hour operation. This shows the zoning of the parcel. Yeah, the surrounding area is developed in a heavily commercial character. It's got C-two zoning, which this isn't allowed use in. Again, the variance application is strictly for hours of operation to extend twenty-four hours a day. This is the site. It was previously a Valero convenience store, already previously used as that purpose. It had a Dairy Queen within it as well. You'll see the concept plan in a second does not include an additional tenant for any kind of drive-through service. It's just the Parker's building as well as the convenience store that they're proposing. Again, given the I-twenty road frontage, the twenty-four-hour nature of operations of hotels as well as the twenty-four-hour convenience store, south of this being a truck stop, to know that all those things kind of make this parcel a strong candidate that twenty-four-hour operation is a reasonable use of this property. So, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Great Parker like to come forward?
Jackson, Parker's, title manager. Thank you, Dylan. That was a great summary, so I really don't have anything to add, but I am happy.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak out in opposition to this variance? Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file VA two-four dash zero six dash zero four, variance to section ninety dash one-four-seven to permit twenty-four-hour operation of a gas station at forty-ninety-nine Jimmy Dias Parkway.
All in favor? Ares. Mr. Tree?
Yes, sir. This is another variance for the location at one-seventy South Bel Air Road on eight-point-four-four acres. Current zoning is C-two, general commercial and CC, community commercial. And the variance is for ninety dash one-forty-seven use provisions to allow drive-through lanes and associated objects placed between a public street and the associated building. Here is the location on the east side of South Bel Air Road across from Oakley Percol Road. And this is the zoning map. And again, it was just rezoned very recently to C-two and CC. And surrounding zoning is mostly R-two residential and C-one to the south. Close-up of the subject parcel and the strip center to the south is a retail center. These are views, street views, looking north towards the traffic light. You can see the existing retail center there. And the bottom photograph is looking south from the traffic light. You see the site on the left that is heavily wooded at the moment. Here's a plat of the property. And this is the concept plan and the area for the car wash is this parcel here for the C-two. The building is proposed to be lengthways this way. So, the end of the building is facing Bel Air Road. And with the circulation required for a car wash with the pay stations, the drive-through lanes and the vacuum stations, this is the preferred layout by the applicant. The proposed building is, this is an idea of what the proposed building will be and this will be the view on North Bel Air Road. This is an example of the drive-through lanes, so that's where the pay stations and the drive lanes will be going on the side of the site onto North Bel Air Road. And the applicant has confirmed that they'd like to use a landscape architect to design the landscaping on the site to beautify the area because this is in the corridor protection overlay district. And staff is recommending that with a condition to make sure that that is done as part of the site review. The landscaping will address the beautification on the site and meet the intent of the corridor protection overlay. And the second condition is if this is approved, the variance only applies to the C-two portion of the property.
Thank you. Owners or applicants like to come forward?
Hey, Christian Wall, four-zero-four, Avery Way, Evans, Georgia. Good job. Thank you, Nana. The only thing I'd like to add is we haven't changed anything. If you remember when we got, we got passed with the BOC on this car wash, the concept's the same and we don't really intend to change anything. It's just that when we were passed for a drive-through car wash, there's an ordinance that says in the CPod, you can't have a drive-through. So, all we're doing is getting approval for the drive-through that's already basically approved. And I'm, any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Opposition to this variance like to come forward? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file VA two-four dash zero six dash zero five, variance to section ninety-one forty-seven to permit a drive-through lane between a building and the public street at one-seventy South Bel Air Road.
I'll second. All in favor? Yes, it's unanimous?
Yes, so this is the same site and it's a variation to section ninety dash ninety-nine for corridor protection overlay district. This is to allow the overhead door to face the frontage. Again, this is the location, the zoning map, the aerial and the street views. This is the retail center that's to the south of the site and the plat of the property. Again, the same concept plan. The, with the orientation of the building on the site, you have an overhead door on this side, which is not allowed by the code. There will be obviously one on the back, which is allowed. So, the variation is for the overhead door on the frontage. Again, with the circulation on the site, that's really the only place for the entryway to the cars into the car wash. The way it's designed, it allows the cars to queue up and enter that way. The proposed building will look similar to this building and all the materials meet the corridor protection requirements. The overhead door is styled in more of a commercial look rather than an industrial look. We've had several of these variations approved in the past and mostly there for car-related businesses like car dealerships or other auto shops. So, staff is not concerned with this type of proposal. And again, it's the same conditions as the variance for the landscaping by landscape architect. The variation only applies to the C-two portion of this property and it will be substantially similar to what is being presented.
Do you want to slide to come forward again? Any in opposition, this variance? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file VA two-four dash zero six dash zero six, variation to section ninety dash ninety-nine to permit an overhead door facing Bel Air Road at one-seventy South Bel Air Road.
Second. All in favor? Ares unanimous? Can I have a motion? Adjourn.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm not seconding it. All in favor? We adjourn. Seven oh seven.